Good morning. I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the Planning Commission, County Planning Commission, meeting of May 12th, 2025. Recommendations of the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at their regular meeting on May 19th, 2025, at 10:30 a.m. The Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms which are available in the back of the room here in the commission chambers. All right, roll call. We have Charlie Johnson absent and Kevin Keen absent today. Do I have a motion to? Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes and are there any corrections?
Make a motion when you approve the minutes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the April 28th, 2025 meeting. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Approval of the agenda?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I make a motion that we take item number 11 and move it after number 19. In other words, put it at the end of the agenda so everyone has time to have their say.
Okay. Is there a second for that?
Make a second.
John. It's been moved and seconded to move item 11 to the end of the meeting, basically, after item 19, due to the volume of people who want to speak on it. That'll let everybody else's item be handled first. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molliter, Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this planning commission on certain items from the agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners who will make the final decision. Item number four is conditional use permit review C U R 1801 for Ron Wyffenbach to review a seasonal retail sales of Class C fireworks in a commercial district and staff recommends approval. Item number five is conditional use permit review C U R 1814 for All American Sales, Doug Bellinger, to review seasonal retail sales of Class C fireworks in a heavy industrial district and staff recommends to end this conditional use permit as a property has been annexed into the city of Box Elder. Item number six is conditional use permit review C U R 2015 for Greg Helgason to review a single wide mobile home in an agriculture district and staff recommends to end conditional use permit C U R 2015. Item number seven is conditional use permit review C U R 2213 for Paul and Kristi Scorsese to review living in a pole barn while building a single family residence in an agriculture district and staff recommends approval. Item number eight is conditional use permit review C U R 2218 for A and B Cabins LLC, Alyssa and Brian Boche, to review a vacation home rental in a rural residential district and staff recommends approval. Item number nine is conditional use permit review C O C U R 24-0009 for Hadley Abiness and Kevin, or Kristen Brost, to review an efficiency dwelling in an agriculture district and staff recommends approval.
Does the planning department wish to have any items removed?
No, not at this time.
Does the commission want any items removed for separate consideration? I'd like a motion then. The chair would address a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as stated.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we're on to item number 10. Conditional use permit C O C U 25-0008. Who's our planning staff on this one? Christine?
Sorry, Cody Sax, senior planner. Kelsey's out. I guess I did not realize that she had this item, so just give me one second.
Can you just bring it up? That's fine. So this item is a conditional use permit to allow an accessory dwelling unit on the subject property. The property is in Silver City. What they are doing right now is they have a existing historical structure that's on the property and they are looking to remove that historical structure and build, so this historical structure is right here, and they're looking to remove the structure itself, this structure, and donate it, and then they're going to build a new accessory dwelling unit on top of the existing foundation. So with that, staff is recommending approval of this conditional use permit with conditions.
Okay, are there questions for staff?
I have one. Go back to the aerial view. I've got a question. It, there, that one. It looks like that's into the alleyway.
It is not. It does not meet setbacks, but it's legal nonconforming at this time, but it is on the law.
Okay, all right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions for?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Brittany, do they have an idea of where they're going to relocate the structure to, or are they still trying to decide on a location?
I believe that they are trying to decide on a location, but they are going to donate it to the, it looks like the Hill City Historical Society.
All right.
Actually, Silver City.
Sorry, yes, Silver City.
Silver City.
My bad.
The chair would address a motion on this item.
So move?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve C O C U 25-0008 with 20 conditions. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item number 11.
11's been moved to the end, so agenda items number 12 and 13.
Oh, excuse me.
Yeah, 12 and 13, I make a motion that we discuss them together, vote on them separately.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to discuss items number 12 and 13 together and vote on them separately. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Right, agenda item number 12 and 13. Number 12 is comprehensive plan amendment C O C A 25-0003. And agenda item 13 is rezone C O R Z 25-0005. Both are to change future land use and rezone from rural residential district to low density residential district. The applicants are Oliver and Shirley Painter. Their agent is Lonnie Painter. Surveyor and engineer is PK Land Surveying. Location of the property is 14630 Country Road. Portion of property looking to be rezoned is 1.008 acres. Access is off of a private access easement via Country Road, and there's no special flood hazard area on the area, on the property. Staff does look at Pennington County zoning designation comparison when we consider these actions. As you can see here, the current zoning is rural residential requiring a three acre minimum lot size. Future land use is also rural residential and the proposed zoning is low density residential. We also consider current zoning within a half mile. You can see that on the left-hand side of the screen. Future land use designations are on the right-hand side of the screen. We also consider roads and streets, infrastructure. Proposed private access easement is identified on the proposed preliminary, or proposed plat, 66 foot of, 66 foot wide, private access easement. 20 foot of that is gravel surface and on the plat that is to be named Hawk Drive. Infrastructure is served by private water and private onsite wastewater treatment. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review and there were no objections or concerns received. Staff's analysis of the request is that the applicants are proposing to subdivide in order to create lot 2A and 2B of lot 2 of lot AR of track 7 burger subdivision through the city of Box Elder because it is within their three-mile plating jurisdiction. Approval of this request will allow the plating process to move forward with Box Elder. Staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request as it appears to be in harmony with existing and future land uses in the area. With that, I'll stand for any questions you might have for either of these two items. You can see on the screen, this is the proposed one acre tract that they're looking to subdivide
Other questions for Jason? Michael?
The lot down at the bottom, is that staying rural residential?
It's actually zone suburban residential at this point. That was platted off many years ago. This is what's considered a developmental lot at this point, so meaning it's taxed. The entire parcel is being taxed.
It has a residence, it looks like, on it. That's why I wondered.
It is, yep. Yep, there is a residence on that property. There's also a residence on the proposed lot 2.
Okay, that's all I had.
Are there other questions for Jason? The chair would address a motion on this item, on item number 12.
I make a motion that we pass comprehensive plan amendment C O C A 25-0003.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve C O C A 25-0003. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item number 13.
Move to approve rezone C O R Z, C O R Z 25-0005.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve C O R Z 25-0005. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we discuss 14 and 15 together, but vote on them separately.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded to discuss items number 14 and 15 together, but vote on them separately. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
So agenda item number 14 is comprehensive plan amendment 25 dash, or C O C A 25-0004. And agenda item 15 is rezone C O R Z 25-0006 to rezone from agriculture district to rural residential district. The applicants are Todd and Lori Hanson, Sage Brush LLC. Their surveyor and engineer is Anderson Engineers. Location of the property is 13846 Highway 40. Access is off Highway 40 and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. Again, the Pennington County zoning designation comparison is on the screen. You can see agriculture minimum lot size is 10 acres. Future land use is 10 acres and proposed zoning of rural residential is three acre minimum lot size. Again, you can see current zoning at the top of the screen, future land use at the bottom. As far as infrastructure goes, the roads and streets, Highway 40 is accessed on these properties from Custer County. It's a state maintained highway, approximately 133 feet of right of way. 40 feet of that is paved surface. Proposed private access easement is 66 foot wide and 20 feet of that is a paved surface. It is served by private onsite wastewater treatment system and private water. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review and there were no objections or concerns received. Staff's analysis of the request is that the applicants are proposing to adjust lot lines in order to create Sage Brush Track 1 and 2 of Haywood Estates. Track 1 will be approximately 40 acres. 39.57 of that will be in Pennington County. .43 will be in Custer County. Sage Brush Track 2 will be 3.02 acres. 2.47 of that will be in Pennington County and the remaining .55 acres will be in Custer County. Staff did approve a layout plan with conditions back in March for this property. The applicants have applied for a variance to allow lot size less than three acres in a rural residential district. This request will be heard on May 19th at the Board of Adjustment meeting. Approval of these requests will allow the variance in plating process to move forward. With that, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request as they appear to be in harmony with existing and future land uses in the area. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Are there questions for Jason? The chair would address, the chair would address a motion on item number 14.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we pass comprehensive plan amendment C O C A 25-0004 with no conditions.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve C O C A 25-0004. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item number 15.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we pass rezone C O R Z 25-0006.
Second.
With no conditions.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve C O R Z 25-0006. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we discuss 16 and 17 together, but vote on them separately.
Second.
Megan Talmadge Planner?
Whoa, oh, sorry. It's been moved and seconded to discuss item number 16 and 17 together, but vote on them separately. All in, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Sorry about that. Megan Talmadge Planner. Agenda items 16 and 17 are a comprehensive plan amendment C O C A 25-0005 and rezone C O R Z 25-0004. And this is to rezone and change the future land use from agriculture district to ranchet district. On the screen is the designations for both the zoning and future land use. This is the surrounding zoning within a half mile. We have agricultural, rural, residential, and heavy industrial. In the interdepartmental review, the city of Rapid City did say that large family lot, large single-family lots are supported within the future land use. The preliminary subdivision plan that was previously filed does not match what this rezone and comp plan is requesting, so a new one will need to be filed. But this is located within the city of Rapid City's three-mile plating jurisdiction. Staff recommends approval of comprehensive plan and rezone. The comprehensive plan and the rezone, as the infrastructure and surrounding future land use are in harmony with the requested zoning.
Are there questions for Megan?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So Megan, the property immediately across Folsom Road on that, how is that zoned?
Sorry, I didn't include the, so that is currently zoned agriculture district. They may be legal nonconforming lots if they're under 10 acres. I don't have their exact acreage right now.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions for Megan? The chair would address a motion on item number 16.
I'll move to approve comprehensive plan amendment C zero, C O C A 25 dash 0005.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve this item. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, item number 17. A motion?
I'll move to rezone C O R Z 25-0004.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve C O R Z 25-0004. Any discussion on this motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item number 18.
Agenda item number 18 is planned unit development overlay C O P U 25-0001. And this is to allow a planned unit development overlay for a specialty resort. The applicant is Jenna Wilburne, and this is located north of the intersection of Rochefort Road and Silver Creek Road. We have seen this item previously. It was about a month ago and it was continued by the planning commission to today's meeting. Since then, I've not received an update on the flood plane on the property from the applicant. I did receive further comment from neighbors and that was included in the packet. But due to there being no further information on the flood plane, staff recommends to deny this item without prejudice.
Are there questions for Megan?
Question. So you're recommending without prejudice on it?
Yes, so if they decide to do a flood plane analysis and come back with more information on it and further flood mitigation methods, because this property does have historic flooding on it, they can resubmit within a year and pay only the advertising and the, they will have to send letters out to the surrounding neighbors again. So I want to leave that door open for them, for them to have the option to continue with that.
And with prejudice would make it so they couldn't apply again for at least a year?
Are there any other questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just to make sure we understand, you've had no conversations with the applicant?
I've talked with the applicant.
Oh, okay.
It's the flood plane information that I'm lacking. I was provided a hydraulic analysis in time for the last meeting.
Yeah.
But that information has not been used further to show any sort of flood plane on the property.
And does the applicant understand what the staff is recommending?
Yes, I talked to her this morning regarding it.
Okay, thank you.
The chair would address a motion on item number 18.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd make a motion that we deny planned unit development overlay C O P U 25-001, 0001 with prejudice.
Second.
Without.
Without.
No, I said with.
You said with. Okay. It's been moved and seconded to deny C O P U 25-0001 without prejudice?
With prejudice.
He said with. He wants it with.
It's without.
You want it with prejudice.
Right. That's what I said. That was my motion, it was with prejudice.
Who seconded that?
What's the staff have?
I, Santana.
I recommended without prejudice.
That's what I thought.
She, Megan recommended without prejudice and Gary wants it with prejudice.
I realize that. No, I realize that. I, I, I don't think that this should come back within a year, no matter what happens in the meantime.
Okay. Discussion, more discussion on this? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Number 19?
Morning again, Commissioners. Jason Thenneson, Assistant Planning Director. Agenda item 19 is conditional use permit C O C U 25-0011. It is for Justin Boland. He originally submitted a conditional use permit for the property identified in your packets. He has since decided on another location for that request out off of Old Folsom Road, so he has requested to continue this item to the May 27th, 2025 planning commission
So your motion, your recommendation is to continue it to May 27th?
Yes, that'd be my recommendation. May 27th.
Who made that motion? Michael made that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to continue this item to May 27th, 2025 meeting. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item number 11.
Cody Sax, senior planner. Item 11 is conditional use permit C O C U 25-0012. It's to allow a contractor's storage yard on the subject property. The applicant is 63 Industries LLC, Clyde Lipp. I do believe he is in the audience if there are any questions, and the Landowners Mule Ear LLC. Location of the property is at the corner of 225th and 151st Avenue. It's, the property is 640 acres, zoned agriculture district. Existing land use is vacant. Access is off 225th and 151st Avenue, and there is a special flood hazard area on the property unfloodway. So when looking at conditional use permits, the planning commission may consider the seven criteria. Those are on the screen. It does appear that the request would meet those criteria. This was ready for interdepartmental review. County highway came back and sent an approach permit, would need to be approved for 151st Avenue. And that the highway would like haul road agreement and that they cannot haul across the bridge at 1416 until after the Box Culvert project has been completed. Box Elder Planning and Zoning requested haul route identification. They have a preferred route to utilize 151st Street to Highway 1416 and then to the South Gate of Ellsworth Air Force Base. They do have concern with the use of 225th to North Ellsworth Road. And they do not want the use of Tower Road and Prairie View Drive. Box Elder Engineer came back and said that they need a haul road, haul route agreement to use any city street. 225th within the city will not be approved as a haul road route. The city and county are discussing future jurisdictional transfer of Liberty Boulevard and Pennington County to Box Elder. Use of this road as a haul road will potentially require additional review by the city. And then, Mule Ear property is a key area for future development in the city. The city and the property owner have a design for a future sanitary sewer on the parcel. And they said short-term use of, use as gravel mining will hamper its short-term value. With that comment, I would like to state that this is not a mining permit at this time. That is June 23rd, planning commission meeting. This is just to have equipment and stockpile aggregate on the property. So again, the applicant has requested approval of a contractor's storage yard for the use of aggregate staging on the site and gravel stockpiling for projects located on Ellsworth Air Force Base. They're working on securing the haul road. Staff did perform a site visit. The land was undisturbed except for a small portion located on the, of a 225th where the approach would be. At the time of the staff report, we did not have any objections or concerns. We have received quite a few since then. So with that, staff does recommend approval of conditional use permit C U 25-0012 with
Are there questions for Cody? Michael?
So if we torpedo this one today, what about the next hearing coming up?
It doesn't do anything to the mining operation. That is a separate use. You can have one without the other. So if you approved a mining operation, all the equipment and staging area is part of that, that permit. So you can have a mining operation without the CUP for a contractor's storage.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, are there other questions for Cody? We have quite a number of speaker request forms on this item. Is the applicant here? Okay, what I'm going to suggest is that you wait till the end, let the other speakers speak first, and then you can respond.
Good, good morning. Thanks, thanks for having us.
Go ahead and introduce yourself again.
Randy Olivier, 2248 Antelope Creek Road in Box Elder. Commercial and residential broker, have been for 12 years, pretty intimate with the area because I've lived there since 2008. I was hoping I could go a little later so I wouldn't have to go through my entire thing and I could just let some of the others speak, but I think my biggest concern is twofold, perhaps three. We did meet last week as neighbors just to talk about the concern of this potential mine occurring so close to our properties. And just what it will do to real estate value in a one-mile circle around this. It's proven around the country and we could probably come up with a couple of white papers that show it will reduce the value of real estate as it's in this area, one-mile circle in particular, but up to three miles. in particular, but up to three miles. As a broker, I have professional experience and can speak to it firsthand, that it will affect a buyer coming into the area wanting to perhaps purchase a home, and that, that's what I mean by a reduced value. What that does then for the county and the city is it will reduce the, the tax coffer, because if your property value decreases, your property tax decreases. So that, that's a weighing objective you guys have to look at, I think. I think the second part is, is if you've traveled New Underwoods Road, they have a mess, because nobody wants to pay for the improvement of the gravel pit to the north with these double, double-length haulers traveling up and down with, I don't know how many wheels, forty, fifty, sixty wheels. Tim McGriff wanted to be here today, he's the landowner to the south, but he's sick, so he let me know. But he has to travel on that road, and it's very dangerous because of the hydroplaning now that is caused by that weight. There are a lot of others here, I think, that can probably speak to some other things, so I think I'm, I'm good with those two points. I think it definitely diminishes the value of the city moving forward with future use plans. Box Elder, I'll let them speak to that, but they did a really nice, comprehensive twenty twenty-five plan. I think five years ago, we tried to bring WAPA, which is a power source, regional power source, we tried to bring that to the north of the interstate, and they indicated that they did not want heavy industrial on the north side of the interstate. So this, this would go with that typical language. We had to put WAPA in another area in Rapid City instead of Box Elder, because that's where WAPA wanted to go at some point. So that was rejected. So I'm, I guess I'm just saying that this, this definitely is a cause and effect. It's, it's, it's perhaps beneficial, but are there other gravel pits in the area that could service the needs of, of the base and others in the area? And what does this do to our area? Again, it's a decline in real estate value. If you do a one-mile circle, there's currently two hundred and fifty-five houses, and, and that's significant. And not to mention the future use and the future growth of Box Elder. That's all I have, thank you for taking my comments.
Are there any questions?
This other gravel pit that you're talking about, does that service Ellsworth now?
I don't know.
Okay.
I just know in talking to the guys that are on New Underwood Road, that travel it back and forth, it's very dangerous when there's rain because they hydroplane. And they can't get on the top part if there's oncoming traffic. So, and, and they're having a real problem, I've understood, third person, and who's going to pay for that now? Who pays for that road improvement? Who pays for the maintenance? So I think it's very unsafe there, and we just don't want it to be unsafe for our kids who are in high school and teenagers driving that road, as well as anyone else trying to navigate a narrow road, because there are no medians, or there are no side, there are no sides to that road. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Larry Larson, Mayor of Box Elder.
Make a difference, which one?
Doesn't matter.
Okay.
Please introduce yourself again.
Thank you, Larry Larson, Mayor of Box Elder. Some of the things have been mentioned, but I guess one of the things that, like I met with like ten people at least in the last week about this, and the letter that went out to the people said it was just a contractor's storage yard, and I kind of understand now what you're doing, you're, I understand you're doing another one, but that is very misleading to me, because the one the city got said, said to allow a contractor's storage yard for an aggregate staging area and gravel stockpiling. So therefore, the people that are getting a letter, they might not be here today because they're thinking you're just putting some, some equipment out there, and that's it. But there's really a lot more to it. The city staff did review the documents, and there are several discrepancies. First of all, the legal description states that the proposed contractor's storage will be located in the northwest quarter of Section sixteen Township two north, range nine east. However, the accompanying map depicts a different location, showing it in the northeast quarter, as the legal description under property information provides the northwest quarter of Section sixteen Township two north, range nine east is designated for rural residential use, according to Pennington County's future land use map, which, by the way, then does not permit this type of development. So I guess the question, will the aggregate staging area gravel stockpile, like where is it really going to be located? Furthermore, the six hundred and forty acre tract in question is a single unplatted parcel. So if Sixty-three Industries intends to occupy only the northeastern quarter of the parcel, and it's not required to plat it, it's, it's unclear then who would be responsible for enforcing the potential encroachment issues into the surrounding area that fall outside the boundaries of the conditional use permit. And it's, it's interesting about, well, a few years back, we met with the owner, Mike Demersman, and had some great discussions, and we have been, you know, really pushing developers if they want to move to the east of Box Elder to invest in, in this type of property, and Mr. Demersman had some great ideas of, as what, as to what he wanted to happen there. And I guess I got the feeling that it was more for like housing apartments, walk, walking paths around the pond, had some, some really great ideas. Because of that, the city invested three hundred thousand dollars in the design of a wastewater trunk line, because we have to have sewer coming up there. So that, that's a little disappointing, I guess. We're hoping, we were hoping that that would turn out to be what he envisioned at the beginning. Now, the city of Box Elder, of course, we're concerned, like has already been mentioned, with the traffic, two hundred and twenty-fifth is way too narrow, and so there's, it can't safely accommodate the semi-trucks that are hauling trailers, some of them double, maybe even triple, I don't know. It's a risk to the trucks, and it's a risk to all the, the other road users. We have lots of kids that walk along two twenty-fifth and cross, because our school is very close to that area. It would be a nightmare, especially in the morning when kids are dropped off, and after school when kids are picked up. The road that, I don't know if somebody mentioned Prairie, but Prairie, we just redid that road. I mean, it's a nice road now, and we don't allow large trucks to, to go on that road. So I don't know where they would go, they'd have to go to the east. Further, it was brought up, the, the noise and, and all that, I might, I have some personal problems, I guess, with that, because I knew, when I was a kid, my dad drove a bulldozer, and he worked in a gravel pit all his life. The dust was crazy, he was covered with it all the time, but it was outside of the city quite a ways, and the silica dust wasn't good for him coughing all the time. We're close, you're, you're putting this close to housing, and the housing is going to have all that dust coming on, on the top of the houses, on their vehicles, in their air conditioning, you won't be able to open the windows, I just don't see it as a, a good solution. The other thing, has anybody done any kind of a, like an environmental study at all? Because you've got a ravine coming down there, and a very nice pond, and I worry about the, the runoff there, and that going on down to, you know, other stock dams of other property owners, and I don't think that's good. I, it was mentioned already, but you could look up, and I did look up some other areas in the country where these gravel pits were very close to residential, and there were always problems, the property value in particular went down, and there were some that mentioned they couldn't sell their houses. Not, so I assume you'd probably lower their, you know, their property value, and their, what they have to pay for taxes if this happens. The main thing, I guess, I'd like to say is hopefully you could find a more appropriate location for this, somewhere away from housing, get out in the country further where it's not going to be a safety hazard, a health hazard, it's just, it's just not a good location. Thank you.
Questions for Larry Larson? Anyone? Okay, thank you. Natalie? Go ahead and introduce yourself, I wasn't sure how to pronounce your last name.
Otterbury.
Okay.
Yes, thank you for letting me go quick, since I've got Littles with me today. I'll be brief. My name's Natalie Otterbury, I live at nine eight six Bennington Drive. I live close to the concrete batch plant in Box Elder, right next to the highway. I came here thinking, again, we were just talking about vehicle storage, I don't know how many acres they need for vehicle storage, but I'd propose probably a much better location for such storage, next to that batch plant. It's right next to the highway, already got a road that can handle heavy vehicles, if anything, they could build less than probably a hundred feet to connect to the overpass to get on to if they need to go north, or if they need to take fourteen sixteen, it's right there. The tax ID is seven one zero seven seven, tract four, Freedom Track subdivision, section twenty-one, two N zero nine E. It's about twenty-four point seven six acres, according to the rapid map that I looked up this morning. It's technically a floodplain, if I am correct, but I believe it's a hundred-year flood, I did not look into that, but I would consider this a much better place to store large vehicles, since it's already zoned industrial, it is for sale, or I believe it's at least commercial. I don't think it would be hard to rezone it to industrial if it's not.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Tracy Law?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Tracy Layer, I live right on two hundred and twenty-fifth, right south, or right north of this area in question. And, you know, today's a beautiful spring morning, and for me, I always know that spring's arrived when I hear the metal larks, right? Out on the prairie, we have them, and I love them. At my house, most of the metal larks are across the road on the subject property. And if this land is stripped, it will take away the essential habitat for not only the beloved metal larks, but many animals. We have deer, antelope, hares, rabbit, fox, skunks, hawk, and many other types of birds that are on this land. There's actually a swampy kind of area, and in the morning, I walk early in the morning, and you can hear like hundreds of birds out there. It's beautiful. But as with many others that are here today, I'm concerned not only with the loss of the habitat, but the cost of such an operation on the citizens of Box Elder, the lowering of property values, the wear and tear on our personal vehicles when the roads are destroyed, the impact on our drinking water, the effect of the dust, the noise, and the light pollution. There are so many negative consequences to this project. And the Pennington County zoning ordinance on conditional use states, in all cases, the impact of the proposed use on the adjacent properties will be a major consideration, that the proposed use will not be injurious to adjacent properties, or reduce the property values within one thousand feet of the subject property, as well as the proposed use will not produce offensive odors, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, or lighting in any amount that will constitute a nuisance. I think that we've kind of established that all of these things will happen. In the criteria for the evaluating of the conditional use application, which you have up here, a couple of the criteria are, one, it will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, or welfare. And two, the uses, values, and enjoyment of other property in the neighborhood for purposes already permitted may not be, in foreseeable manner, substantially impaired or diminished by the conditional use. History has proven that the gravel mining is adverse and harmful to the health of the surrounding community. If this project is approved, it will limit and interfere with my rights to quiet enjoyment of my property. I therefore ask that this conditional use permit be denied.
Questions from the commission?
Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Kevin Case?
Good morning. I am Kevin Case, and I reside at one five zero two four two hundred and twenty-fifth Street, that is a mouthful, in Box Elder. I actually live to the, to the east of Tracy. I live there with my wife, Jody, and who's unable to be here with me this morning. I'm here today to urge you to deny a conditional use permit, twenty-five zero zero one two. There's a long list of reasons why this conditional permit is not beneficial to those of us who live in the area. I'll share a few thoughts. Number one, purposeful planning. This isn't something that just pops out of the air and happens. I, I'm here today in my capacity as a homeowner in Pennington County. My daytime role is superintendent of schools at Douglas Fifty-One One School District in Box Elder. I note this only to say that Douglas Schools is in the process of working on our facility's master plan, a document that will guide us through intentional, and I use that word intentional purposefully, because I think it's a key piece to what's happening here, to intentional decision-making for our future. The decisions and recommendations that will be contained in our master plan will guide decision-making in a planned and informed manner for the future. As you're all aware, Box Elder is the fastest-growing city west river. I applaud the city for their planning for the future, and their willingness to try to clean up a number of eyesores from the past. We're trying to make Box Elder an attractive place for people to want to come, and so I think, in the past, it was kind of the Wild West out there, and I, again, I applaud our, our city council for the work they've done on that. This property is adjacent to the city of Box Elder on the northeast and potentially the south side of the city. I struggle to see that thoughtful planning has taken place that makes sense for there to be a gravel pit immediately outside the city limits. I'm uncertain how much purposeful planning has taken place between the city of Box Elder and Pennington County relating this, to this property. I urge you to make decisions based on priorities, collaboration, and what is best for long-term growth in the city of Box Elder. I have, number two, I have concerns with our future property values if a gravel pit comes to our area. You've already heard the concerns with that. Information shared with us is a potential drop in existing property values in areas with gravel pits could be as much as twenty percent. These drops in value would be tied to noise pollution, air pollution, safety concerns, roads, et cetera. Not good for us who own homes and property in the area. Again, road upkeep and safety. This past August, bring a different perspective, but this past August and October, I was part of the Ellsworth Air Force Legislative Task Force. At our August twelfth meeting in Rapid City, both Pennington County and the city of Box Elder spoke to the ongoing damage that is happening to county roads and streets as a result of the heavy traffic linked to construction at Ellsworth Air Force Base. Both entities indicated roads were being damaged beyond repair, and were wondering where funding to fix the roads would come from. What thought has gone into road maintenance that will be needed as a result of this rezoning request? What is the plan for truck routes? And will, and what will be the allowed hours of operation, and the list goes on? Roads are a huge issue, and we have tons of priorities for roads in Box Elder. We have a master plan we're working on to try to make sure roads are, we're getting connected. I think there's much more important pieces to getting some other roads done than trying to clean up messes that have been made by heavy truck traffic. than trying to clean up messes that have been made by heavy truck traffic. Number four, when we moved here in twenty twenty-one, we opened an Airbnb in our lower level of our home. So I, uh, my wife and I are also business owners, if you will, small business. Jody has become a super host as a result of her hard work. Our description says, "Welcome to Case Place, a spacious, quiet retreat." A recent guest from two weeks ago stated, "We thoroughly enjoyed the surrounding farmland and waking up to watching cows peacefully graze in a nearby pasture." I'm uncertain how the roar of heavy equipment and dust from the gravel pit will fit into future reviews for our business. I believe very few of us here who received notice of this meeting read our registered letter and exclaimed, "Wow, this is a great thing for those of us who live next to this property." The rezoning request is purposely vague, it's lacking clarity, it's misleading, and should not be considered. I urge you to vote to deny this zoning request.
Are there questions for Mr. Case?
Just make a quick comment. I understand what you're saying, and you've done it well. We're not debating the mining situation today. I'm just, for your information, it puts us in a spot. You know, I may have one view on the, the storage thing, I may have another view on the, the mining thing, so. And I understand what you're saying.
I go back to, it is purposely vague.
Yep.
And should, it should be tied together. You tied a lot of things together today earlier.
Yep.
So, uh, I think it would make sense to put all, I, I don't think it needs to be, it needs to be considered at all. But I, I just, I, I think there's a lot of people here to speak to this also.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cody, could you bring us up a map of the area that shows the residential area around this?
Uh, so sorry, Cody Saxon, your planner. Uh, the residential area would be, uh, this is in Box Elder.
Mm-hmm.
I think when I looked at the Box Elder zoning, you got some highway service down here. And then this is, it was yellow, so I believe it was like medium-density housing is what they have theirs as.
Hal Werner? Is Mr. Werner here? Dave Hatch?
Good morning. My name's Dave Hatch, um, property owner just across one fifty-first, uh, but adjacent to the property in question. Um, I echo everything that was, been said here. I just wanted to, um, dust is a real concern for me. Um, not that the wind ever blows in western South Dakota, but, uh, the northwest wind blowing would blow that dust right into basically our front room of our house. Um, so that's a concern. And then I'm also a owner-operator trucker that has spent time belly dumping in and out of gravel pits. And I know for a fact that just my truck alone stirs up a lot of dust, let alone all the other equipment and other trucks hauling, so. Um, also, being a trucker, I'm very aware of bridges and weight limits on roads. And, uh, we, when we come in with trucks, we're normally empty. Um, but if we do have to, um, haul anything, we have to come down on a designated truck route which goes through the school zone there, which is very dangerous. Um, so a continuous truck traffic through there wouldn't be good at all. And then on one fifty, or, uh, fourteen sixteen, the bridges are weight-limited currently for hardly any weight at all. And then, uh, I was, I was curious about how the approaches are put in, how, how you determine where the approaches go. That's just one of the questions I had. And, uh, and then also, a very big issue is the property values. So that's all I wanted to echo today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Dennison?
I'm, I'm not a very, not a very good speaker, but I, I've lived out there for twenty-five years. I'm right straight across the road on the north side of the property. My wife has had a daycare there for twenty-five years, and there's a lot of traffic. And it's very dangerous. We've had wrecks out there in front of our house. And I just don't want to, I don't want to ruin the view out there of what's gonna happen. And the road is narrow and the ditches are deep. And it'd just be a bad deal for us and the value of our property. We're gonna eventually sell and move out, but not at this time. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Dennison? Thank you. Myron Mann?
Hello. Myron Mann. I live at two two four seven one Antelope Creek Road. Been there since ninety-two. Um, I'm really divided on this deal. I think if you own property, you should be able to do what you want to with it. But there's so many drawbacks on this. There's so many unanswered questions that hasn't been answered on it. The infrastructure is not there to handle trucks. We don't know whether it's gonna be five dump truck loads a day or fifty belly dumps with a pup on it, making a hundred trips. Um, that road's already dangerous. There's, at the bottom of one hundred and fifty-first where it goes into fourteen sixteen, there's people in the ditch all winter long there from that road. Um, and I don't think, and Mr. Lewis, your question on whether it's the mining or the staging, I don't see any difference in it, except for some of the dust control because they're still gonna be taking trucks in, dumping gravel there, and taking it out. The noise level, the dust, and all that stuff's still gonna be there. Uh, another question I would like to know, why the letters that went out just went to the people that write bordered it? Why didn't it go within a half-mile radius or something? And I know this is a very touchy area. You're dealing with Pennington County, you're dealing with city of Rapid City, you're dealing with the Mead County.
Mm-hmm.
You know, who's gonna take control to police what goes in there? Who's gonna take control to fix the roads and do all this stuff like that? Um, plus, you're wanting to run those trucks up and down a school bus route. What are you gonna do with your school bus route there if you got trucks running up and down it, you know? Um, I don't know. I'm, I'm against it just because of the safety issue. Somebody will get killed and wrecked there if this is allowed to go forward. Questions, please?
Cody, can you respond about the letters?
So, Cody Saxon, your planner. So, per state statute for a conditional use permit, letters are sent to property owners within five hundred feet of the property. Uh, however, when we move forward with the mining permit, those are within a half-mile. So anyone within a half-mile would receive a notification letter for the mining operation.
Cody, why would the mining permit be discussed on a different day?
Um, so they submitted their conditional use permit application for the contractor's storage because the mining permit, you have to get a mining permit through the state of South Dakota. Um, you have to notice in the paper. That takes time. Ours takes time to get. So, um, the contractor's storage is just, um, to allow them to, um, store some gravel there and have equipment there at this point in time.
Okay, thank you.
And I know this doesn't, shouldn't matter to Pennington County because it's all Mead, but there's a lot of housing developments north of that 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 road is well-traveled, Antelope Creek Road down across there. You know, like I said, it's a touchy issue because of where it's located with the three jurisdictions there. Um, somebody's gonna have to step up and take responsibility for maintaining the road, for policing the weight limits, for doing all that stuff out of these three jurisdictions.
Thank you. Mark Nodel?
Good morning. My name is Mark Nodel. Live on, uh, two two six hundred one fifty-first avenue. Only been there close to forty years. Uh, live across the street from where this property is. And over the years, you kind of look at your neighbors and kind of take, take a look and see how do they handle their stuff? Do they maintain their fences? They do not. Do they lock gates so as they put critters out there, whether it's cattle, whatever? Well, when the cattle get out, the neighbors are pulling fences apart to get the cattle back in so we don't have cattle getting hit. The only point I want to make, you look at the history of what they've been doing, and it goes right back to the same letter that we all got. Pretty misleading. I don't see anything changing. So, being in business as long as I've been, I've always been under the understanding, if it starts off ugly, it isn't gonna get any better. And that's kind of the way I see this. It is starting off ugly, and I don't see it getting any better. So, last week I had a meeting in my shop, invited a few people. I was amazed how many people showed up. People, they live within a mile of me, never met them. They came, were interested, not only in this permit. Give us the time for the next meeting. Better have a bigger building. We're gonna fill it. Okay? Any questions?
Thank you.
Can I add something, Mark?
Okay.
Last summer, when this all started, they was out there digging holes, three or four of them. Didn't, with cattle running out there. Didn't put any fence up around the holes, didn't do anything. One of the neighbors up north of me, I stopped him one day, and I said, "Do you know whose cows are out there?" He said, "Well, they're mining somebody else's." I said, "Well, there's two cows there hanging around this hole for a day and a half now. I think you better check it." They went up there, there was two calves down in that hole that couldn't get out. Is this the kind of stuff that we're gonna deal with once they start this mining permit? I thought you as a commissioners needed to know how it was handled from the very beginning. Thank you.
Thanks. Harry Christiansen?
Good morning. My name is Harry Christiansen. I'm one of the owners of the land in question, along with Mike Demersman. I think we've owned that land for about twenty-five years now. Uh, a couple of things I want to point out is that this is not the mining permit, as has been be clear before. The letter that went out was that, the instructions of the county planning division, to phrase it that way. Uh, a couple of things. Number one, the gentleman who talked about the man who had his cattle in our land and grazing leases, the lessee is responsible for the fences. And this particular lessee did nothing on our fences. Before that time, the lessee we had, who went out of the cattle business, maintained the fences. Our new contract, uh, leasing contract is with a reputable, uh, cattle guy, and he's gonna fix all the fences. So that was something that we should have been on top on, but we'd always anticipated that, uh, the people assigned those leases read the requirement that they maintain the fences would do so. That particular lessee did not do so. He's not gonna be leasing our land again. Uh, I would like to point out a couple of things. I don't want to get into the actual mining permit, but it seems like this is kind of a combination of both. Uh, Mr. Lip, or the engineer, and we're, we're not the, uh, we own the land, we're not doing the mining. We're just gonna collect the royalties of it. Uh, the engineer will go through all the, uh, requirements for dust protection and equipment and that type of stuff. I'm hoping that this isn't like your father's, uh, mining operation, because that was a long time ago. I think things have changed. Uh, our, our theory on this is that we want to develop this land. And we did meet with the mayor's office, Box Elder, a number of, uh, years ago. Matter of fact, at one time, we had a company out of Utah that was gonna buy the whole thing. Uh, as those things usually work out, there's a lot of, uh, a lot of problems in closing that transaction, and explosion of interest rates ended that deal completely. Our plan is this, this is a, we'll go with the mining, this is a four-year mine. This isn't a, a permanent gravel pit. There's enough, uh, deposits there for four years. Our agreement, agreement with them is for four years. Our intention is to develop, have somebody, we can't do it. My partner's eighty-five, I'm seventy-six. We're not developing land. We just own this land. Our intent is that if we can have a developer take a look at buying the whole section, he has this four-year revenue stream of, you know, approximately a half million dollars a year. He can use that to alleviate his carrying costs and move the project forward, developing it. It's not a, a ten-year deal. It's a four-year deal. That's all the deposits are there. That's what our contract is for, is for four years. We are trying to develop this land or have people develop. We can't do it. And to make it more attractive to a developer, we put this revenue stream there that would be able to, uh, offlay his, uh, development costs. We are not increasing the price of the property. We're leaving it there because we really want to get it developed. We want to see it as a residential area. Uh, and that's, our intent is not to use this as a mining facility. This is the last thing we had in mind. But we are trying to figure out some way to entice development of that land so that it goes on the tax rolls, not as agriculture, but as residential and commercial property. Uh, and like I said, the actual jurisdiction over this, there's no confusion. It's, it's Pennington County, and when it goes into Box Elder, it's Box Elder. I don't know what the jurisdictional, uh, problem is with this because it doesn't seem to me to be one. The state mining, uh, board commission will have to issue a permit to do this. And in that permit, there's a reclamation requirement. We also have that reclamation requirement in our lease, the, to use the, the gravel. And it requires it to be completely reclaimed, filled back to grade, the overburden will be put on, and it'll be seeded. And so we're, we're not talking about something, we don't want to disrupt the property. We don't want to make it undevelopable. We're convinced that, the engineers have told us, we can make that look just like it did before, at the end of four years. Now, the roads and all that is beyond my expertise to discuss, and I think that has to be between the different, uh, road departments and which route they want them to take. But you gotta let stuff get to the base somehow. And that, this primary use is gonna be the base, and the other use is going to be, uh, you know, things that are contingent to the base. But the thing, remember, it's only four years. And if we decrease property values, which I don't argue that doesn't happen, it'll be a very, very short-term, uh, reduction because it will be back to normal at the end of four years after the reclamation process is done. The state board requires a bond to be put up by the, uh, mining entity to ensure that the reclamation is gonna occur. And that, and that's basically what we're looking at here. Uh, and I understand concern. I mean, you know, uh, I've worked legislative bodies and all sorts of bodies my whole, uh, career. And I, I don't say that they're not right. I mean, those are legitimate concerns they have. And I'm not gonna, you know, attack those concerns. What I do want to attack is one thing, is that this is not going to be a long-term gravel pit. It's a four-year deal. Because at the end of four years, those reserves are gonna be gone. Um, and I apologize, and we paid for those two calves that were dying. So we made that, they were made whole. We didn't pay for it, the, the, uh, company did. And so they were made whole. Uh, and I think, you know, the fence problem was something we should have addressed, but as I said, the, uh, lease agreement for grazing requires the lease seed, uh, to, lease, or I'm sorry, to maintain the fences, and this particular individual did not. And he will not be leasing our land again. And there is not, there will be a cattle lease in place for next year. So, I think it's, you know, we're not doing this to stop the development. We're doing it so we can get that land developed. Someone can look at it and say, "No, this is appealing to us." We can develop the whole section at one time. So if I've got any, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions? Michael?
Question. Okay, say for example, the mining permit goes south, it doesn't work. Is there still need for this conditional use permit?
Well, you know, if the, if you're not gonna grant the mining permit, then this, this is, this is required, uh, as part of the mining permit. We're not going to store equipment. We're not gonna do anything to that land that, uh, would endanger it if we don't have a mining permit. No, we're not gonna allow equipment to be parked there, gravel to be stockpiled if they're not going to, uh, to mine the property. And we control that.
Okay.
We, the owners, control that.
Other questions? Okay. Jackie Owen? Thank you.
Thank you.
Jackie Owen, I purchased, um, a house.
Jackie Owen, I purchased a house in Raider Point a year ago this week. I'm retired, and I agree with nearly everyone who has spoken so far. I will say that the last gentleman that spoke assuaged some of my concerns, given that it's a four-year project with an end date. Assuaged only some of my concerns. I would like to say that I do see the two issues as lumped together. I am not a long-term resident of South Dakota. I have, however, lived within two and a half miles of a heavy equipment slash gravel pit site, and I have also worked within two and a half miles of a heavy equipment slash gravel pit site in two other states. The first state was heavily regulated. The gravel pit ran 24/7 with trucks coming in and out. Those trucks do not stop on a dime. It was close to a school, it was on a bus route. There were incidents, there was at least three fatalities of children, riding bikes or walking to school and being hit by gravel trucks. And there were subsequently lawsuits. In the second case, where I taught within two and a half miles of a gravel pit slash heavy equipment site, we were mystified, this was a brand-new school, we were mystified as to how our special education numbers were exceedingly high for that state. Kids with learning disabilities and kids with mild cognitive delays, putting them with an IQ of between 80 and 100. I left the school probably 10, 15 years after I left. A colleague, a former colleague, let me know that the ravine that led from the gravel pit and had a pond in it, sound familiar? The ravine where the kids played and, and that flooded into the, into the schoolyard whenever we had heavy rains, was laden with heavy metals from the gravel pit slash storage area. And, once again, there was causation between the heavy metals and the students with disabilities, and there were lawsuits. Just wanted to throw those two situations out there, because they seemed pretty parallel to the things that are being discussed today. I oppose, I oppose the consideration for that property to be used as heavy equipment storage and potentially a gravel pit. Even if it's short-term, I'm still opposed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jerry Dur, Commissioner?
Good morning, Jerry Dur, Commissioner. This is my district. I really wasn't aware of this until I get a phone call from Mr. Hatch asking me, you know, and letting me know that this was going to be up this morning, and so I did look at it last night. And so, I'm listening to what, you know, the individual is impacted by this, and so I'm going to say I'm in opposition to this. And even if it wasn't for some of the comments this morning, I would be in opposition to it just based on location, next to the residential area, listening to what Mayor Larson talked about, and what future land use, and looking at what that could be used for, and what they've already put in, kind of planning for that. I live south of Norwood. I have a gravel pit that's about a mile from my place on Highway 44. And, you know, I can see the dust when it goes up, the lights at night, that type of stuff. It really doesn't bother me where I live. The only difference is when there is a road project and all the trucks are hauling out of there. And so, on 161st, which is my place, is off of, Pennington County is currently doing a project up north, and so for weeks it was just non-stop gravel trucks. My grandkids and my daughter and my wife like to walk in or bike that road, and we're talking a very rural area, and they could not because of the ditches, kind of just like being explained here, there is no room to get off the road. And so, when you talk about a mining operation and getting close to a residential area, and then hearing that the property owner is looking for future land use and this to be residential and/or commercial, I would just point you down the interstate, head toward Nordale Subdivision, and it's a taxing entity on its own that has, several years ago, it became statewide and national news for a sinkhole. And it was a former mining operation that was operated by the state of South Dakota, reclaimed, and now we have vacant homes there that became part of a sinkhole that are vacant and still vacant to this day. And so, I believe when you're looking at what the future land use could be, specifically with this one, with the residential, think about the long-term impact, and I hear somebody reclaim a mine, and it's only going to be four years, you know, who says it's going to be four years, and what does that reclamation look like? And so, you know, I was in here with you before, which we currently have an alternative energy committee meeting here later at 1:00, because, you know, we're looking at land use in an agricultural district and looking at changing some of the land use and doing zoning overlays related to that. In fact, the ordinance allowed the solar, YaroTech, solar wind to go out east of me. You know, we put a moratorium on that for a year. But we're looking at, you know, some zoning overlays in these agricultural districts to talk about, you know, what future land use would be. And in this case, this is one of those, kind of like the YaroTech permit. If you pass this one today, it does not go forward to the Board of County Commissioners. The other one that is tied to this with the mining, that one will, if you do pass that, would go to, or they could appeal to the Board of Commissioners. So, I think the comments related to this one today, you heard from the property owner that wants to put this project in, this conditional use permits tied to the mining, I would, at the very least, one, I would ask you to deny this, but if you do not, I think it should be moved to the next hearing on the mining one, and put them together so that these comments can be heard at the same time, because you just heard from the property owner, they are tied together. One will trip the trigger on the other one, and it sounds like if this one gets denied, there would be no application for the mining, and/or if the mining got denied, this one would not go through. So, those are my comments, and I appreciate it.
Thanks. Questions?
No, I, I agree with what you're saying. The mining thing, I, I think the mining thing, from my point of view, should be first. What we're doing here would be second. I almost hate to, to vote on this today-
Right.
-without knowing what's coming up. If we could move this on to the June 23 meeting, I would think that would be a better situation for all of us.
Right. Yeah, and again, when you talk about publication and what's required, irrespective of the publication guidelines or the permitting from the state, I do believe they are tied together, it's the same project, so. Thank you.
Thanks.
I have one from McCain. I don't have a first name.
That is my first name. Got myself in there, excuse me.
Hi, I'm McCain. I live at 22454 Antelope Creek Road. Everybody's, a lot smarter people have talked than me. Some things I just want to point out, that, that map is, is, it doesn't really kind of give you the whole picture of exactly where the, where this is at. It is right by Box Elder. We, we drive that road 225 all the time. And then, kind of talking about how the property is kept, the excavator, and, and I know it's just one excavator, and they're in the middle of a project, but they talk about cleaning up and keeping it secure. The excavator that put in the, the approach is sitting there, it's been sitting there two weeks. So, if they're going to come in with their equipment, is it going to just start sitting there all the time? And I know this permit is just about using it as a storage yard, which, sometimes I'm a trusting person, and sometimes I'm not, and it seems kind of like they're trying to trickle their way in. Oh, we'll do just this little bit, it's just this little bit, it's just this little bit. And when that happens, it's best to just kind of stop it before it starts. Either, either come in, tell us what you actually want, what you're actually going to do, and what the whole plan is going to be, and then decide. And, and I would, I would encourage you, if this is going to be moved to the next meeting, because again, you can't, you can't see stuff, looking at it from the map, especially this map, it's like, it, it looks like there's a, that is Box Elder. That, that's not just, that's not a, outside neighborhood, that, that is where Box Elder starts, that is, that is the border of Box Elder. North of that, they've got a couple of ranchettes, and then even north of that, there's, on 224, 226, north of that is a bunch of houses. The road 151, it goes up. Our whole little areas, I guess you'd call them ranchettes, we got 20 acres, our neighbor's about the same size, all the way north up to Elk, Elk Creek, all of that is, is full of homes. There's a development down there that, you know, people take 151 all the time, they're going up, right, right past this corner. And then I would encourage you, if, if this is moved, which I, I, I just think this one should just be denied, because it, it seems to me that the mining permit will come with the ability to store stuff on-site, so I don't see why this would even have to be separate. And if it is separate and mining is separate, then this should still be denied, because the dust from storing the large piles of gravel is also one thing. So, if they're going to mine it, mine it and get it out of there, don't store all of your stuff there anyway. So, if, if they, if they are completely separate and they need a storage yard separate from the mine, they should still just not have the storage mine, they should mine it and get it out of there. And, which fits with the idea of, it's, you know, it's a four-year, it's going to be quick, And if, then, on the other hand, if the mine does allow a storage yard, then there is also no, no need for this, right? And again, I told you I ramble. If this is moved to the next meeting, and we're talking about it the next meeting, I would highly encourage you to drive out there and see the site yourself, because you can't see it on the map, this map is horrible at telling you where it's at, and when you're out there, you'll, you'll, you'll get a feel for what's, what's going on in the area. I mean, there's, there's buses, buses go, go there all the time, families go there, there's that daycare right across the street. That's, that's kind of all I had to say.
Okay. Any questions?
I wouldn't have answers, so.
Thank you. The applicants, would you like to speak?
Good morning, Commissioners and our fellow South Dakotans. My name is Lyndon Bolt. I'm one of the owners of 63 Industries.
What's your name again?
Lyndon Bolt.
Okay.
L-Y-N-D-O-N-B-O-L-T. So, I've been a resident of South Dakota Rapid City since I was born in 1981. I've never moved away. I love this state, and I love what we do here. There's been a lot of the ongoing concerns that we've heard today. I just kind of want to touch on a couple of things. One, I killed those cows, and I didn't mean to.
Please-
That was an accident.
Speak into the microphone.
That was an accident. If the fences would have been fixed like they were supposed to, normally I don't leave holes open. I owned a cattle ranch for many years too, sir, I feel bad about that. And I reimbursed that man for both of his calves, fully reimbursed it.
It's not about reimbursement, it's about-
I know, it was about the safety. Exactly. I understand. It was a safety concern, we were told that there wasn't any cows in there, I feel bad about that. But we did make the owner whole so that he wasn't taking a financial hit because of what we were trying to do. So, my next point is, is I don't want anybody here to think that we were trying to be sneaky, or underground, or throw anybody from Pennington County under the bus, or our commissioners, or our planning people. I came down here and I asked them, what do I need to do in order to remove some top soil and get an area to set up to store our gravel piles and our equipment to get our mining permit? It's a two-step process. The state does the mining permit, Pennington County does the-
Grading.
The grading permit, so we can remove top soil and, you know, get started. So, I want all of you to know that there was, nobody was trying to do anything sneaky. I came down here, fully open, with everybody about what we wanted to do, and how we wanted to do it, and what the process was to do it legally and correctly. And so, I'm sorry to you and anybody else that thinks that we were just trying to send out some little letter saying, "Oh, we want to store some gravel over here." That's not our plan. We plan on mining this property if we're allowed to. So, Mr. Mayor, I understand your concerns. My grandfather worked at a gravel quarry here on the west side of town for many years, 36 years. I understand silica dust, I understand the issues that it causes. That's a limestone lead rock pit. The gravel on this property is alluvial fan pit material, basically like river rock. Yes, there's dust, but to his point, when his father worked there, there probably wasn't any MSHA regulations. The mining industry changed a lot in the 1980s when the coal miners all got sick, people started dying. We follow all of the MSHA requirements, they come and they visit our sites randomly, whenever they want. The dust control out of South Dakota controls our dust. We have water trucks, we have water systems on our crushers to control the dust, to control the dust on the roads. If we don't do that, I get fined, big time. So, it is in my intentions to do things right, do things properly, do things in accordance with the state of South Dakota and our commissioners, and with the MSHA regulations as far as noise, dust, anything like that. I do understand the truck traffic, that is a concern of mine too. We talked about that as an ownership group. You know, how are we going to make this all work? The one thing is, is we've already got quite a bit of truck traffic on this road because of all the side dumps, dump trucks, everything with the landfill that comes off of 251, correct? Is that right?
225.
225.
225.
So, we've already kind of got some traffic, you know, heavy truck traffic issues there already, and so I guess we're kind of compounding on it, but it's kind of like, how can they do it, but we can't? And I know that we live in an unfair world, that we all just want to try and work together, Real estate values, I concur, I, I get it a little bit.
You get it a lot.
Yeah. What's that?
You get it a lot if you live by it.
Yeah, I understand. And I also understand-
Speak to your profession, please.
Oh, excuse me, sir.
Excuse me.
Sorry. I'm out.
You have the floor.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. I think some of you know me, I've done some other things besides just crush gravel in my life, so we'll leave it that at there. So, any questions for me, please?
I have a question about, and this refers to the mining, but will it include blasting?
No. No. There's no blasting. And that's, that's my other thing, is like with the, the limestone pit out here where they had all the caved-in tunnels and everything.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? The way an alluvial fan pit works is you remove the top soil and you stockpile it, okay? We would do that around the outside edge to create a barrier.
Birmingham system.
Birmingham systems, okay? It stops noise, it stops dust, okay? I just lost my train of thought. I'm sorry.
Okay, that, that answers my question, though.
Yes. So, we have regulations under the state-
Oh, sure.
-that are, I mean-
Stringent.
Yeah. You guys aren't going to have to police us, and the community isn't going to have to police us. We are policed by MSHA, and they don't put up with any garbage. And a lot of the silica dust comes from limestone lead rock pits, okay? And those are pits where you'll end up with an 80, 100-foot-long high wall. An alluvial fan pit, our material is on an average of six to 14 feet deep before we run out of gravel, and then we reclaim it, and we put it all back, we topsoil it, we seat it as we're going. So, it's not like we're going to come in here and drop this huge bomb in four years and then say, "Now we're going to start reclaiming." The state requires us to reclaim as we mine. So, we're repairing as we're mining. It's a process, so that when we're done, we reclaim the last five to 10 acres, and we leave. It's a process as we go along. So, I just kind of wanted to clarify some things. I kind of feel like we're in a Dukes of Hazzard movie here, and I'm trying to strip mine Hazard County and the whole county, and everybody wants to shoot me right now. So, that's not what we're trying to do. And we're trying to develop material for a growing community, you know? Same thing with the batch plant down the road, so.
Okay.
Anything else?
And then I'm Clyde Lip with 63 Industries. I'm the, I guess, owner and engineer of record on, on this project, particularly, you know, like Lyndon alluded to, this is an alluvial fan or a colluvial fan. It's, it's glacial, glacial deposited material. It, it follows a ridge in this area. We operate another pit in Meade County, just west of here. We've operated it for the last four years. And really what happens when we, when we come in here, people think it's unsightful. All you're doing is recontouring the prairie, because we only pull off about seven to- because we only pull off about seven to, maybe max twenty feet of material in some spots, but really it's just taking the high points off this, recontouring the prairie, putting it back. I know the, the subject map shows this whole parcel, but our contract that we have with Demersman and Christiansen is just for the northeast quarter, which is a hundred-and-sixty acres in that upper northeast corner of this piece of property, the farthest away from the higher-density residents, and also kind of where we're planning on placing our mining operation, our stockpile, storage area is in the lower portion of this, of this meadow here. We're, we're up, we're up from the, the drainage that goes through there, I put together an extensive SWIPI plan that is in county, in the county right now for, for review. At no time do we interrupt any of that, do we get into that, it's all protected. We, we're doing the same thing on the, on our current mining operation, it has a very similar drainage in it. We have no effect on that at all.
Okay. Questions?
Yeah, I asked this question before, and I'll ask you. Say, for example, the mining hearing on the twenty-third goes down the tubes, it doesn't pass, is there need for this particular agenda at this point?
This was simply a way for us to get started in the process of moving topsoil, so that we had a place to set our crushers and our stockpile of gravel. Like I said, not trying to do anything snaky, we just, this was the process, yeah.
There's no problem there.
Yeah, well, some of the community thought that we were trying to be sneaky about the way that the letter got sent out, and that's not our plan.
We were following the process.
Just following the process.
I guess my thinking is, going along with the Commissioner, is, I think, and everybody else is tying us all together, along with about a million letters we've received, I would think we'd be further ahead to back off what we have today to June the twenty-third and go together on these things.
Yeah.
That would be my thought at this point, so.
You know, and, and another thing to add to this, and I, I don't think a lot of people are probably aware of this, there, there are two other, or, or have been two other active pits of this style mining within probably a mile of this area right here.
Active now?
Yeah, they're not active at the moment, but they were. So, Meade County had operated a pit, I think as, I think they, their, their permit was closed down in two thousand and eight, and it would have been north on one-fifty-one, and then probably about a mile, possibly in that next section fifteen, in ninety-six, there was another alluvial fan pit that was operated in this same area. So we're not asking to do anything that has never been done in this area, you know, a lot of this is with the, with the ongoing growth, particularly with the-
The B-twenty-one.
With the B, you know, the, you know, the B-twos or the-
The B-twenty-one expansion project.
B-twenty-one expansion at the, at Ellsworth, and then with just the, the other development that's happening in Ellsworth, that's all tied to this expansion to the base. Right now, our, our largest customers are LEI and Quinn, two contractors that are doing work on the base. Our thought process with this is, instead of running forty trucks to haul the material all the way from our pit in Meade County on two-two-four and DIAS, why not locate a pit that's closer to the base, which in turn cuts down on truck pack traffic?
Truck traffic.
I mean, there was, there was logic to this, we had been in negotiations with Mr. Christiansen and Demersman for about the last year, and kind of to get back to, to the trucking route, we were provided with a trucking route from Box Elder back on May twenty-second of two thousand and twenty-four, and we do have an in-place, I mean, we wouldn't have passed go even on moving forward with this project if we didn't already have those questions answered.
Yeah.
That was one of the, the, one of the main questions that I had coming into this partnership with these gentlemen, if we're going to go forward with this, what is the ingress egress plan? If there is no ingress egress plan, I'm not moving forward and filling out all this paperwork.
Right.
We already had something in place, so.
Okay. Questions? Thank you. Okay, I have one more speaker request form for Tim Lee.
Thank you.
And then, then the board can discuss.
My name's Tim Lee, I live on Civil Way, I'm like to the right of that little seventeen right there, I'm literally boarding this little square that you're showing, and as, as one of the, the people said, that this is right in Box Elder, and this division is brand-new, I mean, I've been here two years, there's still building houses right there, and it's almost all new, new families, right? I'm, I'm kind of the old guy there, so, there's lots of, lots of little kids, and to say that there's going to be no effect, there has absolutely got to be an effect, there has to be, you're going to put a mine, you're going to put gravel pits, there's going to be dust, it's going to be in the air, and Box Elder's already had issues with water, so, we already know that there's a water issues there, how's that going to be affected? And my other question, I guess, is, they keep bringing up the state, the state is the one that approves the mine permit, if we approve this, can the state override and allow this to happen without the county coming in and voting and doing this? Because I know you guys are people, and you have kids, and you have grandkids, or, or you have families, and I don't think any one of you, as a human, would want this to be that close to your new home that you just built, you know, the, it just is, when you work this hard to get an American dream and make it, and I know that that's probably what this guy is trying to do, he's trying to collect on, on the property that he has or inherited, or however he got it, and it's time for him to, to cash in, there's got to be other ways to cash in, you know, this just seems like a very detrimental way for the whole area of Box Elder to pay for his profit, or for these few people's profit, you know, and I get there's cause and effect on everything, and, and as somebody else said, I think that everybody should have the right to do on their property as they want, but when you affect so many people around, I think it needs to be looked at a little heavier, and I think that if we push this off to the next one, is there going to be more steps already in place that makes this harder to stop? You know, I think, I think you should say no now, and maybe eliminate the need for the, this, this meeting on the twenty-third, so, that's my opinion, I, like I said, I'm a normal guy, I'm just a regular guy, but I'm right there, and I know that every one of my neighbors was upset, and luckily I was able to skip a little bit of work this morning to show up here, most of them can't, and, and it's kind of ridiculous that, that we're thinking that they were going to put this right on top of town, you know, like there's so much rural South Dakota, why are we putting this right on top of town? So, that's all I had to say, I don't know if there are any questions.
Thank you. Board, Commission?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would offer a motion. I would move to defer discussion and/or action on the conditional use permit, COCU-CU-25-dash-zero-zero-one-two, to coincide with mining permit CUP scheduled for June twenty-third.
Second.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I believe that both of these, I think what I understood, planning to tell us, that both of these, the one that's before us today and the mining issue to come later, both require conditional use permits, I don't think there's any doubt about that. And so, it would just seem to me that, in hearing what we've listened to today relative to this, and knowing full well that this other will need to come to us, if granted by the state, that we just defer everything and, and have further discussion and action at that time.
Is there discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, this item will be continued to do, the June twenty-third meeting, we meet at Could we move the discussion out into the hallway, we still have a couple items to
When that truck went through the bridge on Zemo Road, did the trucking company incur any cost for fixing that bridge?
We don't need an executive session today, okay? County Board report, the Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendations from the April fourteenth and April twenty-eighth Planning Commission meetings. Okay? Could those of you that are having conversations go out in the hallway? Items from the public?
Yeah.
Sorry, that's my brother-in-law.
Items from staff?
The building permit report, we are on pace, similar to what we were in two thousand and twenty-four, our single-family residences are down, this month was down, but our previous months were up, but we're on the same pace as last year.
Okay. Items from the membership? You know, we could continue this to a meeting in July when I won't be here anymore. Just saying.
You want to go through this again?
No, July, there'll be a new one, maybe you.
That's okay.
Okay. The Chair would address a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
I think this is the wisest choice.